Antonio, are you ready? He's ready. Yeah, ready.
Okay, I'm gonna call this work session to order at 5:08 PM. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Luis I. Cavereda.
Present.
Councilmember Lisette Serbin. Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Esteban C. Rosales. Councilmember Javier Vargas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Tadeo Asael de la Olla.
Present.
Mayor Nieves Reddell. Vice Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We're gonna go to item number two A. Video conference presentation by parliamentary Timothy Nguyen of Perfect Rules Inc. on Robert's Rules of Order for city council meetings as modified by the Arizona Open Meeting Law and the Sunday City Code.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. It's always important to make sure the microphone is working. So I was informed that we did have some technical glitches, which of course are not a problem. They've become standard in today's day and age. But I have emailed the presentation once again to Kay. Hopefully she'll be able to receive that. But even without access, I was wondering if I would be able to share my screen or if there's still an issue with that. If not, we can proceed without the slides.
We are able to see your screen. I don't think we're gonna have any issues.
Okay. So let me try to share that now. So when I click Share, it says we need permission to share your screen. So I'm just walking you through what it's giving me here. And it looks like the permissions are on my side for Microsoft Teams. Okay. So is there another step that I need to do? Apologize, I'm more familiar with Zoom than I am with Teams. See. So I'm assuming you're not seeing.
We're not seeing your PowerPoint yet.
Right, okay. I wonder if anyone has any.
We're having our IT.
Tips, yeah, all right. Try to get that. And just for an explanation, I am traveling. I was with another client, so that's why there is a hotel room behind me instead of my usual office.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, so you should have an option on your screen that says Share at the top right.
Okay. So when I click it, it says presenter mode and then it says window. Which of those should I be clicking? I did click window, is that correct?
Go ahead and try a presenter mode there.
Okay. So it says content only, or standout, side by side, or recorded.
You could go ahead and try a content only there.
Content only. Okay, I've clicked that.
Okay, and then afterwards, does it give you an option to go ahead and select the content that you're trying to show everyone here?
It does not. That's what I was expecting, but no, it doesn't. It just says window below it.
Okay, does it not give you an option that says a screen on it by any chance?
No. And I am using a Mac, if that makes a difference.
Let's see here. I do believe you sent the PowerPoint as well.
Yes, I did.
Here we are. So then, we have our side here. Go ahead and present it for you here. Go ahead and give me one second, please.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and put the presentation up on the screen for you really quickly.
Okay.
That's there.
All right. Let me see if you have that. And is there a presentation or full screen mode?
Yes.
That way we can just go through without scrolling.
There we go.
Well, actually, the presentation mode should show just one slide at a time. I think it was on the drop-down menu you were on before. It's either full screen or presentation mode, and that way, as you click through them, it'll just advance one slide at a time. There won't be any gap between the slides.
Yeah, it gives us reader mode, but it doesn't give us that presentation mode, unfortunately. It just gives us full screen here.
Okay. All right. So let me see what it's. All right, so is there perhaps, if we could just take a few more seconds perhaps to find, you know, that mode that will show just one slide at a time?
Yeah, most definitely.
Yeah, I fear that if we scroll through it, it'll be, it'll make less sense.
So yeah, it's on the browser itself, it's just giving us full screen mode. Once we download it, it should go ahead and give us that option, but it's currently downloading at the moment.
Okay, okay, so we can. I think it'll be worth the wait to, as far as the presentation goes. Okay, so while we're waiting for that, let me go ahead and introduce myself. I am Tim Nguyen. I am a professional parliamentarian, which means that I travel around the country helping organizations of all different sizes to have better, more efficient, smoother meetings. And so I've traveled all around the country and I deal with many different types of organizations. But as parliamentarians, what we find is that most organizations are having very similar issues, which is good news because it means that the issues that you're having have been faced many times before. The common things that you see in your meeting are common to many other meetings. So what works for organizations in the past, you know, has proven to work for organizations in the future as well. So we bring, you know, as parliamentarians, we bring that experience from other organizations into your meeting as well. So it looks, if I'm seeing this accurate, it looks like we have it up on the screen. And so whoever is, whoever is advancing, yes.
I'm sorry, we have the presentation. Once you're ready to move to change to the next slide, just let me know and I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. So we'll give it a try right now. I'll just say next slide and then should be able to.
Okay.
Like, next slide. Okay, there we go. All right, so in this seminar, we're talking about Robert's Rules of Order. So the first question that we want to ask is why Robert's Rules of Order? Why are we using it? Well, with your particular organization, like most organizations, you have actually adopted Robert's Rules of Order as your rules. So about eighty-five percent of organizations in America use Robert's Rules of Order, and that is to say they've officially adopted it. And even organizations that haven't officially adopted it usually follow it or use it as a guide for their meetings as well. So it's a great tool in meetings to understand Robert's Rules of Order because it is so widely used and widely understood by organizations as the parliamentary authority. Now, what we do when we teach parliamentary law is we teach the general and then we move into the more specific. And what I mean by that is that as we go through this, I'm going to tell you what the general rules are, but then when the rules are a bit different for your organization because of its type or its size, I'll be highlighting that as well. But I don't want to just teach you exactly what the rules say about your organization because then if you go to another organization, you're gonna think that still applies. But I want to just be real clear, what is the general rule and then what is a very specific rule. So next slide, please. So we're gonna do a quick history of Robert's Rules of Order. What you see on the screen now is the 12th edition of Robert's Rules of Order. That's the current edition. And next slide, please. And this man you see on your screen here is General Henry M. Robert. He is the Robert in Robert's Rules of Order. Next slide, please. And so how all of this came about is one day, General Robert was asked to chair a meeting at a church in Massachusetts. And it was a controversial meeting that nobody else wanted to preside over. And General Robert at that time was not yet a general, he was just a lieutenant in the army. And he was young and a bit naive, and he knew absolutely nothing about meeting procedure. And this was his, would be his very first meeting that they asked him to chair. And so he thought, sure, y'all do that, you know, what could possibly go wrong? And so that meeting, next slide, please, went about like this. It was so bad, in fact, that General Robert decided right then and there that he was never gonna be put in that position again, that if he was ever asked to chair a meeting again, he wanted to know exactly how to do it. So he searched everything he could, he scoured the libraries, he scoured the country looking for rules of order for local societies, and he found that it just didn't exist. There wasn't a manual that told you how to run a meeting. Everyone was doing it slightly differently. So, next slide, please. In eighteen seventy-six, he compiled everything he found about what worked in procedures for meetings, and he compiled that into the first edition of Robert's Rules of Order. So that's where Robert's Rules of Order started. Next slide, please. And then what happened was, once it was released, it was very popular and people loved it so much that they flooded him with mail. But most of the mail that he received contained further questions, like what do we do in this situation? What vote is required here? How do we make this motion? And so what he did is compiled all of that information into subsequent editions, taking all those questions and the answers, and including those and incorporating those into later editions of Robert's Rules of Order. Next slide, please. And that continues still today with the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. It isn't just these are the rules because somebody made them up. They are tried and tested rules that work for organizations, and a new edition comes out about every ten years, updating it by basically taking questions that people are still asking and adding clarity to them in each continuing edition. Next slide, please. So Robert's Rules of Order says, "In a board meeting where there are not more than about a dozen members present, some of the formality that is necessary in a large assembly would hinder business. The rules governing such meetings are different from the rules that hold in other assemblies in the following respects." And then it goes on to list out seven differences in the rules. So basically, Robert's Rules of Order, the whole big book, applies to small boards. But also, there are seven deviations from those that also apply. And so as we go through, I will be highlighting what those are. Next slide, please. Just so that we have a fuller understanding. Now, another thing to keep in mind is there are specific rules of your organization. If your organization adopts a specific rule or has in its governing documents certain rules that conflict with Robert's Rules of Order, those rules that were adopted by your organization supersede what's in Robert's Rules of Order. So we'll keep that in mind as well. Something that Robert's Rules of Order says might not apply specifically to you because you've already adopted a rule that supersedes that. That's very common, but most organizations usually don't adopt that many rules that supersede Robert's Rules of Order and rely mostly on Robert's Rules of Order. Next slide, please. So one thing I want to cover right off the top is unanimous consent. So unanimous consent is a time-saving mechanism in parliamentary law and is very useful. Next slide, please. So with unanimous consent, next slide, please, the chair would say, "If there is no objection, one hundred dollars shall be donated to the ABC Foundation," as an example. Next slide, please. And then the chair would say, "Is there any objection?" Next slide. Then the chair, after listening for an objection, if she doesn't hear an objection, she would say, "Since there's no objection, one hundred dollars shall be donated to the ABC Foundation." Now, this is valid in parliamentary law for two reasons. First, unanimous consent is valid because the underlying principle is if there's no objection to taking a certain action, there's no reason the assembly should go through all of the formal steps to adopt that motion when the chair can simply declare that it is adopted. Now, the second reason that it's valid in parliamentary law is that any member has the right to object. So how does a member object? Next slide, please. And next slide, there we go. And so a member simply says objection, or, next slide, please, a member can say, "I object." So what this does is just let the chair know that there is not unanimous consent to skip that process, and then you must go through all of the formal steps. So by objecting, a member is not necessarily objecting to the action that's proposed to be taken, but is objecting to skipping all of the formal steps. And that way, you just follow the formal steps if there is an objection. Now, it should be noted that not only is a member not required to give a reason, but it's actually not in order for a member to give a reason for the objection. The member simply objects. Next slide, please. Now, another thing that I want to cover right off the top is making a point of order. Next slide, please. This really comes down to protecting the rights of members. So I have a question for you here. What is the purpose of a point of order? So when these questions pop up, just give some thought to what your answer would be. And that way, it helps you to engage with the question and it gets your mind working so that the answer is more meaningful. So that's why we present it in this way. So what is the purpose of a point of order? Is it A, to get business back on track? B, to object to a particular action? C, to point out a violation of the rules? Or D, to stop a member from speaking? So just think about what your answer would be. And now, let's have the next slide, so we can point out that the answer is C, to point out a violation of the rules. So you'll also notice that on the bottom right of the screen, you'll see R O N R, 12th Edition. That's referencing the current edition of Robert's Rules of Order. And then you'll see a number, and then a colon, and then another number. So this is the reference to exactly where you can find this information in Robert's Rules of Order, if you want to note that on any of these particular questions or citations that we have here. So when it says twenty-three before the colon, that's what section it is in Robert's Rules of Order, and then after the colon, that's which paragraph it is inside that section. So every paragraph in the 12th edition of Robert's Rules of Order is indicated in this way. So when you flip the book open, it's easy to find these references. Next slide, please. So who can make a point of order? Remember, a point of order is when you're pointing out a violation of the rules. So who can make a point of order in a board or a committee? Is it A, anyone in attendance in the meeting? B, any commissioner or staff member? C, any member of the body that is meeting? Or D, only the member who has been assigned the floor? So who can make a point of order? All right, next slide, please. So our answer here is any member of the body that is meeting. So just because you're at a meeting doesn't mean you can make a point of order in that meeting. You have to be a member of that body. So if you're a member of the parent body of a committee, but you're not a member of the committee and you happen to be at the committee meeting, that does not give you the ability to make motions or to make a point of order at that particular meeting. Next slide, please. Okay, so who can second a point of order? Is this any member except the presiding officer? Anyone in attendance? Any member of the board that is meeting? Or D, none of the above? And this one is a trick question, so give us the next slide. And we see that it is none of the above. So why is it none of the above? Simply because a point of order does not require a second. So it is the right of an individual member to raise a point of order whenever the member sees a violation of the rules. Next slide, please. So what happens after a member states a point of order? So if a member says a point of order, then the presiding officer should ask the member to state what the point is. In other words, what rule is being violated? The member would then state what rule is being violated, or how the rules are being violated. And then what happens from there? A, the chair makes a ruling on the point. B, members debate the point of order. C, the chair asks the secretary to read the pertinent rule. Or D, the point of order is followed unless there is an appeal. Think about what your answer would be there, after a point of order is made and stated. And please give us the next slide so we can see the answer. So the answer is the chair makes a ruling on the point. So when a point of order is made by a member, the chair is required to then make a ruling on that point. Please give us the next slide. So let's review some of these. Next. So a point of order is used to point out a violation of the rules. Next. Can be made by any member. Next. Does not require recognition, which means you do not have to be recognized by the chair. You can simply call out point of order. And number four, normally must be timely. So next slide, please. What that means is don't hesitate to make a point of order. If you see a violation of the rules, now if this is a violation that you would like to point out, there is no rule that says you have to point out every violation. If it's a small violation that you don't think is harming anything, that's fine. But if you see a violation that you think is causing some harm to the meeting or to members' rights, and you want to raise a point of order, you have to do it right away. Because almost always, if you wait, it's gonna be too late. We see this a lot in meetings where someone will, you know, after a meeting, they'll say, "Well, this and this and this happened in the meeting, was that right?" And we tell them, "No, that was absolutely against the rules." And then they say, "Well, what can we do about it?" And the answer is nothing, because it's too late. Point of order had to be raised at that time. All right, so keep that in mind with point of order. Next slide, please. Here we go. So this is how a point of order would be made. A member simply says point of order. Next slide. The chair then says the member will state the point. Next slide. And then the member makes, states what the point is. For example, a member may not speak against another member in debate. So if a member sees this happening, a member would immediately make that point of order. And now let's have the next slide. So then the chair will rule one of two ways. The chair either rules well-taken or not well-taken. And whenever a point of order is made, everything else stops. The chair must make sure everything stops, and we have to get a ruling on that before we continue. So, next slide. Here we'll say that the chair rules the point well-taken. And next slide, please. So the chair would then say the point is well-taken. Members are reminded to refrain from speaking against other members. Next slide, please. And so that's, you know, an important, very important look at how members are empowered by parliamentary law to be able to ensure that the rules are being followed. And Robert's Rules of Order says, "When a member thinks the rules of the assembly are being violated, he can make a point of order." Next slide, please. And it's very important, this word here, thinks. When a member thinks the rules are being violated. So this means that you don't have to be certain about it. If you actually think it, then you can raise a point of order. You don't have to know exactly the citation of which rule is being violated. What you'll do is just explain why you think the rules are being violated, and then it falls upon the chair, who then has the duty to make a ruling on whether or not the rules are being violated. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, please. And I should have mentioned that in front. Any questions, please, please jump in. I want to encourage questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you could go back to the previous slide, you mentioned any member can make a point of order, and then the chair is the one that is responsible to...
And whenever a point of order is made, everything else stops. The chair must make sure everything stops, and we have to get a ruling on that before we continue. So, next slide. Here, we'll say that the chair rules the point "well taken." And next slide, please. So the chair would then say, "The point is well taken. Members are reminded to refrain from speaking against other members." Next slide, please. And so that's, you know, an important, very important look at how members are empowered by parliamentary law to be able to ensure that the rules are being followed. And Robert's Rules of Order says, "When a member thinks the rules of the Assembly are being violated, he can make a point of order." Next slide, please. And it's very important, this word here, "thinks." When a member thinks the rules are being violated. So this means that you don't have to be certain about it. If you actually think it, then you can raise a point of order. You don't have to know exactly the citation of which rule is being violated. What you'll do is just explain why you think the rules are being violated. And then it falls upon the chair, who then has the duty to make a ruling on whether or not the rules are being violated. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Yes, please. And I should have mentioned that in front. Any questions, please, please jump in. I want to encourage questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So if you could go back to the previous slide, you mentioned any member can make a point of order, and then the chair is the one that is responsible to decide. What if the point of order is made because the chair is violating one of the rules? What happens in that case?
So that's a great, great question. I think it's going to lead into our next slides. But even if it's the chair who's violating the rule, you would still make the point of order the same way, and the chair would then rule on that the same way. However, if we go to the next slide, we see, yeah, so what happens if the chair gets it wrong? Because if the chair is the one who's violating the rule and you raise a point of order, the chair may then be, okay, oh, reminded that, you know, oh, yeah, that's correct. The point is well taken. The chair may agree with that. The chair may be able to point out in making the ruling that it's not a violation of the rule, and that may convince the member who made the point of order. So it may be satisfied simply by the chair's ruling, one way or the other. And each time the chair makes a ruling, the chair should explain the ruling, or at least point to, you know, what the basis for the ruling is. Now, whether it's about the chair or not, anytime if a member thinks the chair got it wrong, then you have the appeal that can be done. And so we'll talk about appeal now. Robert's Rules of Order says, "By electing a presiding officer, the Assembly delegates to him the authority and duty to make necessary rulings on questions of parliamentary law." So this is very important. The Assembly is in charge of its meeting. However, the Assembly doesn't want to be burdened with deciding every question that pops up. So it delegates that authority to the chair. But it keeps an eye on those rulings of the chair. And if any member disagrees with the ruling from the chair, whether it's brought about by a point of order or not, because at any time in a meeting, the chair may make a ruling. If a member makes a motion, the chair may say, "That motion's out of order." Or may say, "That motion's not debatable." And when that chair makes a ruling, you then can, as a member, appeal from the ruling of the chair. So next slide, please. Robert's Rules of Order says, "But any two members have the right to appeal from his decision on such a question." So, next slide, please. Why does it say "two members"? So think about that. Why does it, "Any two members have the right to appeal"? Well, our answer there is that an appeal, unlike a point of order, an appeal requires a second. So you can make the appeal. If another member seconds the appeal, then, next slide, please. Then we have this question. What happens when an appeal is made and seconded? So A, the ruling of the chair is reversed. B, the chair must reconsider his decision. C, the question is vested in the Assembly for final decision. Or D, a committee is formed to decide the matter. So what happens after there's an appeal and a second? Next slide, please. So the answer is C. The question is vested in the Assembly for final decision. So once an appeal is made and seconded, that question is taken out of the chair's hands and placed before the Assembly to decide. Next slide, please. So if the presiding officer wants to speak and debate on an appeal, does he have to leave the chair? So let's say the presiding officer made a ruling, "well taken" or "not well taken," and then there was an appeal and a second. So now he places it before the Assembly, where the Assembly will debate it and decide it by a vote instead of the chair's making the decision on his own. So what happens if he wants to speak and debate? Does he have to leave the chair, yes or no? Next slide, please. See, the answer is no. So the chair, never in any size Assembly, under any rules, never does the chair have to step down to debate an appeal from his decision. Because that's just an explanation of how he came about his decision. It's part of his role in the chair. Next slide. Okay, so if the chair is a member of the Assembly and if his vote would affect the outcome, can he vote on an appeal? Next slide, please. So the answer here is yes. So the chair is never prevented from voting on an appeal. He votes just along with all the other members, even though it's an appeal from his own decision. Because the chair doesn't lose that right to vote, simply because it is an appeal. Excuse me. Next slide, please. Okay, so now, this is an important question. What vote is required to overturn the ruling of the chair? You'll notice two vote requirements here. One is a majority in the negative. The other is two-thirds in the negative. Now, you'll notice that both of these say "in the negative." And why is that? Well, when the chair puts the question to a vote, the chair will say, "All those in favor of sustaining the decision of the chair, vote yes." So, you know, they will vote in the affirmative, is the point that I'm trying to make here. So to overturn the ruling of the chair, you would vote against that. So the motion is not put on appealing or overturning. It's put as sustaining the chair. So when it's put that way, does it require a majority in the negative to overrule the chair? Or two-thirds in the negative to overrule the chair? So our answer here, next slide, please, is a majority in the negative. So it's only a majority that's necessary to overturn the ruling of the chair. Now, if it's a tie, then what happens? Well, when it's a tie, the ruling of the chair stands. Why? Because it hasn't been overturned by a majority. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's take a look at the appeal process. A member would say, "I appeal from the decision of the chair." Next slide. Then another member seconds that. Next slide. Then the chair says, "The decision of the chair is appealed from." Next slide. It's usually debatable. Next slide. And it's a majority to overturn the chair's ruling. So that's a quick recap there. And it's not necessarily a bad thing when you are a chair to get an appeal, because then it's just the Assembly. The Assembly will decide that question. And then, once the Assembly decides, the chair, even if it overturns the ruling of the chair, the chair must follow the Assembly's guidance on that appeal. Next slide, please. So in putting the vote to a question, putting the question, excuse me, to a vote, the chair would say, "The question is, 'Shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the Commission,'" for example. Another alternative would be, "The question is, 'Shall the decision of the chair be sustained?'" Next slide, please. Okay, and any questions on what we covered so far before we move on to the next section? All right, so now we're going to look at quorum versus vote requirement. So these are two concepts that often get intermingled and confused. So next slide, please. Let's take a look. So when we're looking at this, let's say we have a group with, the total members are, next slide, seven. So we have seven total members here. So let's say it's, the quorum is set at a majority. Next slide. So a quorum would be four. Next slide. That means there have to be four members present at the meeting. In our scenario here, let's say we have five of these little green people present at the meeting. So we see that with five members present, we have satisfied the quorum. So that's taken care of. And now, if a motion is made and seconded and placed before the Assembly and considered and then goes to a vote, next slide, let's look at the vote results. Let's say the vote is one in favor and zero opposed. So is this adopted? Well, the important thing we have to look at here is that quorum is set at four, and there are five members present. So the quorum is satisfied. The quorum does not need anything else, because those five members are present. Now, if one votes in favor and zero vote against it, that means four abstained, but there are more in favor than opposed. Next slide. So this motion is adopted. Because the requirement for the quorum is simply that they have to be present, not that they have to vote. So a voting requirement is never based on the quorum. It just requires a quorum to be present to transact business. All right, next slide, please. So let's look at a different scenario here. Next slide. Let's say again, we have seven. Next slide. Total members, and then quorum would be four for that, and we have three members present. But now, let's say that three voted in favor, and no one voted against. So this is unanimous. Now, what is the outcome of this? Is it adopted or lost? Next slide. So it's a bit of a trick question, because it's neither adopted nor lost. Because since there was not a quorum, it was not actually put to a proper vote. So the Assembly actually didn't make a decision on this, because the Assembly didn't have the authority to transact business at that time. So this is not adopted, but it's not lost either. Because lost is a situation where the Assembly, with a quorum present, actually took action on that piece of business and decided against it. Here, the Assembly was not able to make a decision because they didn't have a quorum that represented the true membership of that body. So without the quorum, you simply can't transact business, no matter what the vote, even if it's a unanimous vote. All right, next slide, please.
Tim?
Yes.
This is Kay.
Yes.
Could you go back to the five scenario? And the one and zero?
Okay.
So Arizona law doesn't count the ones that didn't vote? If they abstained?
Yes, so what do you mean, it doesn't count them? Yes.
So it wouldn't count towards a quorum?
With the quorum, okay.
If they abstained?
Yeah, that's something I wanted to cover in the next slide.
Okay, all right.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead forward here. So, you know, and what I just gave you is, that's, you know, from Robert's Rules of Order, that's the general rule. Now, if we look at disqualification versus abstention, because this is something that was provided. I was provided some material ahead of this meeting about a specific, you know, case involving this scenario. So I can't give you a legal opinion, and nothing on this is civil or criminal law. Parliamentary law is a separate field. But I can tell you what parliamentary law says about this situation. So if we have the next slide, please. What we're looking at here is disqualification versus abstention. So let's say we have a situation where there are seven total members. Next slide, please. Once again, four for the quorum, and then members at the meeting is four. Okay, so we have our quorum. Quorum is satisfied. Next slide, please. Then let's say one member has a conflict of interest or for some reason is not eligible to vote on this particular question. Next slide, please. So that would bring our members at the meeting for this particular vote essentially down to three now. Because as you can see here, this member doesn't count because this member is not eligible to vote on this particular question. And a quorum is always based on those voting members. So if we have, our next slide, please. So let's say we have three in favor and zero opposed here. Now, this would by itself adopt the motion. That's a unanimous vote, certainly would adopt the motion. However, we see that our quorum, now, even though four members are present, the one with the X on it there that we see has been disqualified. And this is language that was used in the interpretation that I was sent in advance of the meeting. And there seemed to be a little miscommunication or misunderstanding of what was being said by that, you know, from a parliamentary standpoint, by that court that had made that ruling. They had ruled that the disqualification of the member meant that the member did not count toward the quorum. That was the disqualification of the member because the member could not vote, did not have the right to vote. Now, that's different than abstaining. You cannot abstain if you don't have the right to vote. You have to be eligible to vote and then say, "No, I'm not going to vote." So if you, in general parliamentary law, if you abstain, means you do have the right to vote, but you say, "Okay, I'm not going to vote." You still count toward the quorum, because you're present and you are a voting member, but you've decided not to vote. However, if you are disqualified from voting, then you are no longer a voting member that would count toward the quorum. So that's something that I did want to address specifically, and just that little nuance there, that yes, that was a case where someone did not vote. But what was indicated there in the opinion was that it was because the person was disqualified, meaning that the person could not vote. So that's different than an abstention when you still have the right to vote but choose not to vote. Any questions on that?
I do have a question, because we just had an item last month on a regular council meeting, or, yeah, it was a regular council meeting. And there was four of us present. One of the members could vote but decided not to vote. So then, we were told that the item did not pass, even though the majority of the council, which was three, voted in favor. She was not disqualified from voting, but she chose not to vote.
So under, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
So then, under Robert's Rules of Order and Arizona law, would that motion have passed?
So I can speak to parliamentary law. And under Robert's Rules of Order, absolutely, you know, that scenario that you explained is the case of an adopted motion. As long as there is a quorum there and the member could have voted, so it still counts toward the quorum, then that would be the case. Now, I did read, you know, some material on that situation or a similar situation that was provided. And I can tell you what parliamentary law would say about it, is that it's accurate, the conclusion that was given in a sample of, "Here's another case and here's what happened there." Parliamentary law agrees with the ruling in that case because of the disqualification of the member, that the member couldn't, could not have voted. But if a member can vote but decides not to, under common parliamentary law and under Robert's Rules of Order, that member still counts toward the quorum. And then, as long as the quorum is satisfied, it only matters the vote requirement. And so one thing you logically have to look at is what's the purpose of having a quorum at all? If the vote has to be, you know, that certain number, if the vote has to be four, why would you even need a quorum of four present? Because if you don't have four present, you'll never get those four votes anyway. So the quorum in parliamentary law is separate from the vote requirement, very distinctly, because the quorum is only who needs to be present, because they have the opportunity if they wish to. But they're not required to vote. Now, once again, you know, I'm not speaking at all about, you know, the specifics of your organization. I didn't see anything in just reviewing your parliamentary rules that apply to you that would change this or deviate from this. And you have adopted Robert's Rules of Order. So you go by Robert's Rules of Order unless there is a deviation. Now, I'm not saying that there couldn't be a deviation in some higher governing documents that I wasn't made aware of. So I defer to legal counsel on that. But on this point of whether that opinion that was written specifically says, "If you abstain, then you don't count toward the quorum," well, I did not see anywhere that that opinion said that from a parliamentary standpoint. It said, "If you're disqualified from voting," meaning you can't vote. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, next slide, please. All right, we're getting there. Next slide. Through all of this. Okay, all right. So now, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Next slide, please. I believe there was a question asked about this. So Robert's Rules of Order, to cover how this is seen in parliamentary law, Robert's Rules of Order states, "Sometimes a series of independent resolutions or main motions dealing with different subjects is offered in one motion." So you might have resolution one through five, but it might just be one motion to enact all of them, to adopt all of these. And that's fine in parliamentary law. enact all of them, to adopt all of these, and that's fine in parliamentary law. Robert's Rules of Order goes on to say, "In such a case, one or more of the several resolutions must receive separate consideration and vote at the request of a single member." So, that, what that means is, 20 resolutions could be brought forth, and, and it could be a motion to adopt all of them, and that could be done in, in one move, one vote, or by unanimous consent. However, whenever this is put forth, any member has a right to remove any of them, and, and even if they want all of them, a member could say, "I, I want a separate vote on all 20." Okay, that's fine, we have to do that, because this is just a time-saving mechanism. If, what, what normally happens is, is you might have 20 resolutions, and you might have 14 of them that are not controversial at all, that everybody supports. So, you just simply get those out of the way, and you do that by allowing members to pull out those six or so that they do want to talk about, that they do wanna maybe, you know, look into more, or vote against, or maybe amend, or whatever they wanna do. They pull those out, and then you adopt what's left in the package, and then suddenly you have 14 resolutions completed and done, and now we work on those others that members did wanna pull out for separate consideration. Next slide, please. Robert's Rules of Order goes on to say, "Such a demand can be made even when another has the floor," as in, "Mr. President, I call for a separate vote on resolution number three." So, at any time before they're adopted, a member can pull that out to get a separate, separate vote on any of the resolutions, or any of the motions that are being put together as a package. Next slide, please. So, we'll look at, at how this, how this works, common way that this works. The chair might say, "The next item of business is the consideration of the items on the consent agenda." Next slide. "As a time-saving mechanism, these will be adopted without debate." Next slide. "Under this procedure, any member may have any item removed for separate consideration." Next slide. "Resolutions one through 12 are on the consent agenda." Next slide. "Would any member like to have any resolution removed for separate consideration?" Next slide. So, then a member might say, "Madam Chairman, I'd like to pull resolution number six and resolution number eight." Next slide. So, the chair, this does not require a second, remember, any member, single member has that right. So, the chair simply says, "Resolution six and eight have been pulled for separate consideration." Next slide. Then she'll say, "Would any member like to pull any other resolutions?", and then, you know, wait to see. Next slide. So, if none others are pulled, then the chair would say, "If there's no objection, the items on the consent agenda shall be adopted, with the exception of resolutions number six and number eight, because they've been pulled for separate consideration." And so, the chair asks, "Is there any objection?" Next slide. Then the chair would say, "Since there's no objection, the items on the consent agenda, with the exception of resolutions number six and number eight, are adopted." So, in this way, we've gotten rid of the bulk of them, we've adopted them, but now we have, we're, we're saving time now in adopting all of those so quickly, so that now we can use that time where we wanna use it, on resolutions six and eight. Next slide, please. So, the chair then immediately says, "The question is now on the adoption of resolution number six, which was set aside for separate consideration, is there any debate?", and then, members will consider resolution number six. When it's disposed of, then you move on, of course, to resolution eight, because it was pulled as well. Any questions on that process before we move on?
One quick question. Is there a time limit as to the items that can be placed on consent agenda?
Just for clarity, what do you mean by time limit?
Like, can we put something on the consent agenda that we discussed a year ago and didn't pass, or we continued it, or tabled it?
So, it, anything that you're, you're going to consider in this way, would have to follow all of the same rules, so, you know, as far as notice, and, and make sure that it, you know, it was noticed and, and all of that. So, there, there can't be any exception to those rules, simply because you're putting it on a consent, consent agenda, but also, there's no special qualifications either for it to go on that consent agenda, or for it to be adopted in this way. So, basically, it's treated just like anything else? This is just that time-saving mechanism? Does that answer your question?
No, but I'll take it.
Okay. Well, yeah, if you wanna, if you wanna re-ask it, I'll try to understand better what your question is.
Continue, please.
Okay, so now, we're gonna look at some questions that were submitted in, in advance of the meeting specifically to answer here, so, next slide, please. So, our first question is, "What would be considered abuse of Robert's Rules of Order?" So, this is an interesting question, because the purpose of Robert's Rules of Order, obviously, is to help the members out, to give them a smooth and orderly and effective meeting. But that doesn't mean that what is, the rules that are contained in Robert's Rules of Order can't be misused, either intentionally or accidentally, to have the opposite effect. You know, if you use them incorrectly, they might actually get in the member's way, and so, we don't ever want that to happen. So, if we look at our next slide, please. We see, Robert's Rules of Order says, "A motion is dilatory if it seeks to obstruct or thwart the will of the assembly, as clearly indicated by the existing parliamentary situation." Next slide, please. "Parliamentary forms are designed to assist in the transaction of business, even without adopting a rule on the subject. Every deliberative assembly has the right to protect itself from the dilatory use, use of these forms." For example, if there's a motion to recess, and then it's voted down, and then the same member makes a motion recess again, and it's voted down, and then the same member makes a recess, motion recess again, and no time has elapsed, nothing has happened, but they just keep making this, obviously, this is a waste of the assembly's time, and a member can't say, "Well, I have a right to make a motion to recess." Well, of course, you have a right to make a motion to recess, but you don't have a right to, to utilize the motion to recess in a way that just annoys the assembly, or detracts from the transaction of business. Next slide, please. So, Robert's Rules of Order makes it clear that, "It is the duty of the presiding officer to prevent members from misusing the legitimate forms of motions, or abusing the privilege of renewing certain motions merely to obstruct business." So, with a lot of this, it, it's about what the effect is, but also what the intention behind the effect is. Like, if there are good faith motions being made, then the chair, you know, must place them before the assembly, but if the chair feels like the wrong motion is being made, maybe he will direct the member in, in the, in the right direction. Or perhaps, if the chair believes that the only purpose for the motion is for it to be dilatory, then the chair could rule it out of order, but would explain, like we, like we mentioned before, when making a ruling, would explain why he's ruling it out of order. And of course, that ruling, like all others, are subject to appeal from the assembly. So, that gives the assembly the safeguard, that the chair won't just make rulings that the assembly itself doesn't agree with. Next slide, please. So, Robert's Rules of Order also says, "Whenever the chair come, becomes convinced that one or more members are repeatedly using parliamentary forms for dilatory purposes, he should either not recognize these members, or he should rule that, that such motions, excuse me, that such motions are not in order, but he should never adopt such a course merely to speed up business, and he should never permit his personal feelings to affect his judgment in such cases." So, we, as the chair, you wanna use good judgment here. Now, in a, in a small board like this, I would not recommend just ignoring a member, but instead, you know, giving the, the rationale behind why you're, why you are ruling the motion out of order, which of course, is always subject to an appeal. Next slide, please. Okay, any questions on that before we go to the next? All right, let's look at our next question. "Can the chair change the roll call order as a strategy if a roll call vote is called for, so the last person named is the deciding vote?" Next slide, please. So, what we have here is just simply the language of how a roll call vote is to be done under Robert's Rules of Order, which, remember, is your adopted parliamentary authority. And so, for a roll call vote, it says, "The roll is called in alphabetical order, except that the presiding officer's name is called last, and only when his vote will affect the outcome." Now, that last statement about the presiding officer being last, and only when his vote would affect the outcome, that's for those instances where the chair does not vote along with other members. But being a small board, and it specifically says so in your rules, the chair votes right along with other members. So, the, the roll should be called in alphabetical order, unless for some reason, the assembly, not the presiding officer, but the assembly decides to deviate from that rule. Next slide, please. Robert's Rules of Order goes on to say, "Each member, as his name is called, responds in the affirmative or negative. If he does not wish to vote, he answers present or abstain. If he is not ready to vote, but wishes to be called on again after the roll has been completely called, he answers pass." Now, once again, this might have more application in a much larger assembly, but the rules still hold the same here. Next slide, please. All right, so, any questions on that last that we covered before we move on? Okay, so here we have a question. "If a motion is lost at one session, can it be made again at next month's session?" So, you're in January, a motion is made, and seconded in place before the assembly, and it's debated, and then, when it finally goes to a vote, it's lost, it's, it's voted against. You know, maybe it's three to four, maybe it's one to six, maybe it's zero to seven, but anyway, it's lost. Now, we come to the next month's meeting, let's say February's meeting. Is that same motion, now, of course, with the, the notice requirements have to be fulfilled as well, but with that being said, is that motion still, could it be made? Can it be renewed, even though it was lost at a previous session, or the previous session? Yes or no? So, give us the answer, please, with the next slide. So, the answer is yes, you can renew a motion that was lost at a previous session, or even the, the last session. Next slide, please. Robert's Rules of Order says, on this topic, "Any motion that is still applicable can be renewed at any later session, except where a specific rule prevents its renewal." So, as long as it's still a valid motion, as long as it still makes sense as a motion, then it is in order, and there is, nothing is held against that motion, simply because it wasn't adopted at last month's meeting. Next slide, please. Okay, this-
Question before we continue-
Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the, the roll call vote, so, is it alphabetical by first name, by last name, does that matter?
I, normally, and this is not specifically, you know, specifically listed out anywhere, but normally, and normally what the examples are, is by last name, so it would just be, you know, alphabetical by last name, the, the secretary would then call those names, and members would vote.
And another example is, oh, my last name is Cabrera, I think I'm, I'm the first one due to the alphabetical order. But at my time, when I was serving as vice mayor, they usually would call me right before the mayor at the end, then should have, should have been proper that I was continued to be called first?
Yes, so that, it would be, it would be alphabetical in that, in that situation that you described there. Now, I would, I would also say here that the assembly could create a, a rule if it wanted a different order than that, but what your order is, is by Robert's Rules of Order, unless you create something, you know, a special rule of order that would supersede that. So, at this point, it would simply be alphabetical, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so with our next question, and this was a very interesting question, "Can attendance at meetings be compelled?" Now, the, the code there says, under quorum, "A majority of the council persons shall constitute a quorum for transacting business, but a lesser number may adjourn from time to time and compel the attendance of absent members." Now, I actually phoned a parliamentary colleague of mine about this question and this situation, because I thought it was very interesting, he thought it was interesting as well. So, Robert's Rules of Order has very little, but does have something to say about compelling attendance, and we, we are in agreement here that, yes, you obviously can compel attendance because it says so in your rules. However, there's not enough substance here about how that would be done, for there actually to be a process to do that. So, and Robert's Rules of Order is pretty clear as well, that if you do want to compel attendance, in those cases where you're authorized to do so, you do need to adopt more substantial rules to explain exactly how that would happen, how it can be done, at what times it can be done, what the vote requirement would be to compel attendance, and then how that would be carried out. And without all of those, you know, applications in process, in, in place, then you, you really don't have any structure that you can point to to say, "This is how we actually compel attendance." And Robert's Rules of Order does reference a motion for that, but it does not give it any characteristics, meaning that for you to use that motion to compel attendance, you would have to create the characteristics of the vote requirement and how it is actually applied. Any questions on, on that one? Which I know is, it may be a disappointing answer, because it's a very strange answer. Yes, you can compel attendance, but you don't have a process for doing it. So, I can't tell you how to do it, because that would have to be in your specific rules. Robert's Rules of Order, based on this, will not tell you how to actually do it, or what any of the, the characteristics are for a motion to do so. Any questions on that before we move on? All right, next slide, please. Okay, now, we're gonna look at the roles of members and the presiding officer, and we're really gonna look at patterns of formality here, what they're for, what purpose they serve. Next slide, please. So, first, I wanna cover some synonymous terms, and if you're reading through any parliamentary literature or Robert's Rules of Order, these are terms you're gonna come across. Next slide, please. And that is president, presiding officer, and chair or chairman. All of these are, to a very high degree, interchangeable. There may be some organizations that have both a president and a chair, so then there would be a delineation between their roles, but when there, that's not the case, the, these are all proper to refer to the same position, and that's the person who is chairing that meeting, or presiding over that meeting, president, presiding officer, or chair. Next slide, please. Now, patterns of formalities for members, what's the purpose? Next slide, please. The purpose, next slide, is, number one, to maintain the quorum. Next slide. To preserve members' rights. Next slide. And to facilitate the smooth and orderly transaction of business. So, everything to do with these patterns of formalities are geared toward those aspects, just making everything easier for the members. Next slide, please. So, they're not, these patterns of formality are not to impede business. Next slide. And they're not to complicate the proceedings. So, anytime somebody says, "Oh, Robert's Rules of Order is getting in the way," I can guarantee you, it's a misapplication of Robert's Rules of Order, because Robert's Rules of Order's key theme is to make things smoother, more easy, and to stay out of members' ways. All right, next slide, please. So, first, we have, "Refer to the presiding officer as Mr. or Madam President, or the Chair, or whatever would be appropriate, based on the titles inside your organization. Never use the Chair's name or the pronoun "you." This helps to associate the individual with the position." So, you know, members may be, may be friends, or even rivals, before and after the meeting, but inside the meeting, the idea is that everybody is their position. If you're a member, you're a member. If you're the Chair, you're the Chair. Because of that role, you are serving those functions in that meeting, not because of your personal opinions, but because you are in that position and that role. So, it helps, you know, when we use those patterns, patterns of formality, Madam Chairman, instead of calling a person by their name. Next slide, please. So, as an example, instead of saying, "Bob, speak up, will you?", when you're talking to the, the Chairman, you would say, next slide. "Mr. President, we're unable to hear the Chair from way back here." So, this is just an example of where that, that pattern of formality makes everything a little more professional, instead of it, you know, over time devolving into just back and forth between individuals. And the reason we wanna avoid that is not when everything is going great, it's when there's a controversial issue, or there's heated debate, then, these patterns of formality really earn their money, because they, they keep everything focused on the business at hand, instead of, you know, devolving into personalities, where, you know, "What, what did you say about me?", and all that, makes it less personal. Next slide, please. So, instead of saying, "Barbara, are you saying I can't make my motion?", which sounds like a, a very personal thing, you would say, "Madam President, is the Chair ruling the motion out of order?" So, we see, once again, it's back to the business and the application of the rules, not personalities between members, and not even using members' names. Next slide, please. Another rule is, "Never speak directly to another member, always speak through the Chair." So, what's the purpose in this? Well, when members are speaking back and forth, it, it has two effects, really, that, that are negative in a meeting situation, and especially, although this is multiplied, when there's heated debate, or something like that. But first, if two individuals are talking back and forth on, on a board of, say, seven, all the others can feel a bit alienated, and they can even, in a worst-case scenario, start talking amongst themselves, because it looks like the meeting is busy happening over there away from them, or gets distracted. But, important thing to keep in mind, that everything that is said in debate is said for the benefit of all the members who are there, everyone who is present, not just the two who are talking back and forth. So, it's very important to direct all your comments through the Chair, that way, everyone benefits from it. And another thing is, when it, when debate is heated, then if someone's talking directly to you, it just automatically, psychologically, gets more confrontational, and you start, you know, doing counterpoints back and forth. Instead, you should address all your remarks to the Chair, because, like I said, you're addressing the entire commission, not one individual, not picking out one individual. Next slide, please. We'll look at an example here. So, instead of saying, "Lucy, how's this different than last time?", which sounds very, you know, confrontational, especially if things are heated, next slide, please. You would say, "Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know how this project differs from the one we did four years ago." So, you're getting your same point out there, but you're doing it through the Chair. Next slide, please. Also, avoid using others' names when they can be described in another way. Might not always be possible, but when, when it can, it can be helpful. Next slide, please. For example, instead of saying, "I've been doing this longer than Glenn, Linda, Lindsay, and Phyllis," which sounds like, you know, calling those people out, and when they hear their name, they're gonna be like, "Wait, what did you say about me?" Instead of that, a member would say, "I have more experience with these matters than members who have already spoken." So, there, there are ways to do it without using other members' names, and that can be helpful, and like I said, especially when there's heated debate. Next item of business, I mean, next slide, please. So, another very important, and all the others that we've looked at, sometimes they can be, you know, the Chair can be a little lax on it. Okay, maybe this won't get out of hand, and then tighten it up in other times when there's more heated debate, but when everybody's having a good time and things are going fine, maybe be not be such a stickler. However, this rule we have in front of us here must always be strictly and immediately enforced, and that is, a member should never attack a member's motives in debate, and never use words like "lie", "liar", or "fraud" in reference to a member. Next slide, please. Let's look at an- Let's look at an example. A member would not, could not say, the member's last statement was a lie. Next slide, please. However, the member could say, I believe there's strong evidence that the member is mistaken. Now, that's a completely different take. You can show an opposing viewpoint, but you can't insinuate that the previous speaker or another member lied in their debate. Next slide, please. Okay, now, these are patterns of formality for the Chair specifically. The Chair always speaks in the third person. For example, next slide. The Chair would say, instead of saying, I told everyone at the start of the meeting to stand when speaking. Next slide. The Chair would say, the Chair will remind members to stand while speaking. Now, standing while speaking is not a rule that would apply to your board because it's a small board, but we just use it as an example here. So you see the difference in the third-person approach. Seems less aggressive, you know, it seems far more formal for a Chair. Next item, next slide, please. And number two is, the Chair never refers to a member as "you." So the Chair would not say, next slide, please. You have the floor. Next slide. Instead, the Chair says, the Chair recognizes the member. So it keeps it very official in using those titles. Next slide, please. Okay. So now, important question here, is the Chair the most powerful person in a deliberative assembly? And before coming across your answer, one should also think, if it's not the Chair, who would be the most powerful person in a deliberative assembly? So when we say deliberative assembly, obviously, we're talking about a meeting of members. Because the meeting, the members assemble in a meeting, and then they deliberate. So that's why we call it a deliberative assembly. So is the Chair the most powerful person? Yes or no? Next slide, please.
Is he online?
I think he froze. Are you guys going to have to let him back into the meeting?
Yes, Esteban, we're trying to get him back in.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. I just took a little break there. Just kicked me right out of the meeting. All right. So, yeah, what we were talking about is, is the Chair the most powerful person in a deliberative assembly? And then, our answer came up as no, so I can only assume then that the Chair disconnected me from the meeting at that point. However, what we have here is a very important reference from Robert Schule's order, and that's, each member's opinion has equal weight as expressed by vote. Being elected the Chair gives one more duties, not more power. So just because you're elected the Chair does not mean you then have the authority to, you know, do additional things. It means that you have the responsibility to do additional things. And we'll see as we continue that you, in performing that duty, there is a specific set of rules that you must follow. All right. Next slide, please. Okay. Now, we're going to look at seeking recognition and obtaining the floor. Next slide, please. So to seek recognition, in order to obtain the floor, a member will simply say, Madam Chairman. Next slide. Or Mr. President, or, you know, whatever the case may be for that organization. And the Chair then says, the Chair recognizes the member. So now, in parliamentary law, there's a very important rule that only one member can speak at a time. And I think we all see why and how that makes sense. But how do we enforce that? Well, members seek recognition first, before they speak. Member just doesn't speak, doesn't interrupt another member, doesn't just start talking. So the Chair, I mean, the member says, Madam Chairman. And then, the Chair says, the Chair recognizes the member. Next slide. Or some alternative, such as the Chair recognizes Commissioner Grant, you know, for clarity, whatever the case may be. But what does this mean when the Chair says this? That means the member's recognized. And once recognized by the Chair, the member has the exclusive right to be heard at that time. And this is a very important and very powerful tool for keeping business on track and also protecting the rights of members. But what we also see here is notice that the language says, the exclusive right to be heard at that time. It does not say the exclusive right to speak. So this means that any type of distraction in the meeting that would prevent members from fully being able to hear or pay attention to the speaker is also out of order, and the Chair must make sure that that doesn't happen. Any kind of commotion or other thing, we can't say, okay, well, we'll continue to do this or play this slide projection while this member is recognized. No, that member has the exclusive right to be heard at that time. Very powerful in parliamentary law. Next slide. So does the Chair have the authority to decide who may speak? A, yes, the Chair controls which members can speak at which time. Or B, no, the Chair must recognize any member who seeks the floor while entitled. So think about what your answer would be to that. And give us the next slide, please. So we can see that the answer is, no, the Chair does not have the authority to just decide who may speak, but must recognize any member who seeks the floor while entitled to it. Next slide, please. Now, we're going to move on to who can amend the agenda. All right. A question that comes up a lot in boards of this size. And important thing to keep in mind, too, is your specific rules. You know, do you have specific rules that would, you know, come into play here? So you do have rules that come into play about amending the agenda, and what they are is those notice requirements, that you can't just put something on the agenda if it hasn't met the notice requirements that you do have. Next slide, please. So Robert Schule's order says, unless a precirculated agenda is formally adopted at the session to which it applies, it is not binding as to detail or order of consideration. So we'll see here that an agenda can be amended, and by amending that agenda, we're not necessarily saying that we're adding anything to it or taking anything away from it. But we can amend the order. And that's even in your specific rules as well, about, as long as you're not violating any of those notice requirements, the Assembly does have the ability to control the order in which it will take up items of business, which, from a parliamentary standpoint, only makes sense. Because when you come to a meeting, there may be things that you want to get, you know, done earlier, things you want to hold off on and wait till the last, certain things you might want to group together. So the Assembly does have control over that. Next slide, please. Keep in mind here, also, that it says, at the session to which it applies. This means that this happens inside a meeting. You can't decide in advance what order you're going to do things in. Now, of course, you do decide in advance which order you're going to do things in, but that's only a guide until it's officially adopted in the meeting, meaning that when you get to that meeting, it is amendable by a majority vote to move things around. Next item, please. All right. Adopting an agenda. Let's look at our next slide. So the Chair says, normally, the Chair would say, the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. The proposed agenda has been distributed, and the question is now on its adoption. Now, in most organizations, or in many organizations, the agenda is a very small thing. It's a very quick thing that's done at the front and hardly ever amended, and that's fine. But this gives members the opportunity to, you know, voice or propose that something be taken up in a different order, it be shifted around for convenience. And if the members agree, yes, that will work for us, that's more convenient, they have the ability to do so. So I'm not suggesting that you should spend a lot, or even any time, on this if everybody's comfortable with the way the agenda is. You simply adopt it by unanimous consent. Next slide, please. Chair says, is there any debate or amendment on the agenda? Next slide. If there's no objection, the agenda shall be adopted. Next slide. Now, let's look at an example of perhaps moving items around on an agenda. Next slide, please. Let's say we have these seven items, and then someone says, well, I'd like to move number six, you know, rescind the rule about overnight parking, to higher in the agenda. Next slide, please. Up to, let's say, right after number two, the zoning committee report. All right. So, next slide, please. How would the member do this? The member would say, Madam Chairman, seeking recognition. Next item. The Chair would then say, the Chair recognizes the member. Next item. Next slide, I should say. And then, the member would say, I move to amend the agenda by relocating item number six, rescind rule about overnight parking, to right after the report of the Parks Committee. Next slide. Now, if it's seconded, next slide. Then the Chair says, it is moved and seconded to amend the agenda by striking out, rescind rule about overnight parking from number six, and to insert it as the new number three, just below the report of the Parks Committee. Is there any debate? Important thing here is just everyone's clear on what the change would be. Next slide. So Robert Schule's order says, after an agenda has been adopted by the Assembly, no change can be made in it except by a two-thirds vote, a vote of a majority of the entire membership, or unanimous consent. Next slide. Now, you'll notice that it says here, it has two different vote requirements here, a two-thirds vote, or it says, a vote of a majority of the entire membership. So why are there these two different vote requirements? Well, it's for larger organizations. Let's say an organization has 1,000 members, and they just get 100 members at the meeting. Well, they're never going to be able to have a vote of a majority of the entire membership because that would be 501 votes. So that's not even a possibility for them. So it would have to be a two-thirds vote for that type of group. Now, this same rule applies to your board of, you know, a much smaller board of seven, I believe. But there's a different effect here. A vote of a majority of the entire membership of your board would be a majority of seven, which would be anything over 3.5. So four votes would adopt this motion as well. So whenever you see that vote of a majority of the entire membership, it means something very different in a smaller board. It means that you're probably going to be able to achieve that vote requirement as well. So whenever you see these two vote requirements, either one, if you, if your vote, you take the vote, and if it achieves either one of these, then that adopts the motion. Next item of business? I mean, excuse me, habit. Next slide. Okay. So who can amend the agenda? Next slide. Our answer here is the Assembly. Next slide. And to be clear, that is simply the body of members who assemble in a meeting. Next slide. So is it in order to introduce business that is not on the adopted agenda? Now, in general, just under Robert Schule's order, yes, that would be in order. And I noticed that, you know, at least in the rules that I was provided there, you have new business listed, and the purpose of new business is to introduce new business. However, you always have to keep in mind, you do have certain notice requirements that must be met. So the Chair also must be mindful of that when determining and ruling on whether any particular item of business or motion introducing that item of business is in order in the meeting. We have to see, did it meet any required notice requirements? Next slide. Next slide. Now, agenda versus notice. That's something we were just talking about. Next slide. And we want to keep that in mind, that if certain motion requires notice, it cannot be adopted without that notice, and is therefore out of order if notice hasn't been given. Whether or not it's on the agenda doesn't make a difference. What we're really talking about here is the notice. All right. Next slide, please. Now, there's a difference between public notice and notice to members. Next slide. So being a public body, you know, you're subject to certain parliamentary rules that are contained in state statutes and city codes. And based on those parliamentary rules, from a parliamentary standpoint, you know, it's very different when there's notice to the public, because if that's required, it's generally, generally cannot be waived. Now, there may be situations where you can waive notice to members, but public notice, generally, you don't see the ability to waive that. Next slide, please. All right. Now, we're going to look at making motions. Next slide. So our first question here is going to be, what is a motion? It's important for us to understand this next question. Next slide. So a motion, as defined in parliamentary law, is a formal proposal that the Assembly takes certain action. Next slide. A motion presents a yes or no question for the Assembly to decide, and because of that, a motion is also referred to as a question. So a motion has to have within it that yes or no component, because the Assembly is eventually going to decide that by vote, and the Assembly's going to vote yes or no. Next slide, please. So it's important also to keep in mind that a motion is out of order if the same effect would be obtained by not adopting the motion. Let's take a look at an example of that on the next slide. So a motion that the fundraising committee shall not be instructed to organize a car wash, next slide, is not in order. This because, that's because if this motion were adopted, it would have the same effect as if it were not adopted. If you don't adopt this motion, then you're not going to instruct the committee to do such. to do such and such. But if you do adopt this motion, that they shall not be instructed, then you're still not going to do that. However, if we change the wording around just a little bit, uh, let's have the next slide, please. We'll see that if you have a motion that the fundraising committee shall be instructed to not organize a car wash, this now, next slide. Would be in order. Because if this is adopted, then actual instructions would be given to the committee. The instructions would just be not to organize a car wash. Very different than the previous version, where they would not be given any instructions if it's adopted. All right, any questions on that before we move forward? And you can go ahead and give us the next slide. Okay, there are three steps to bringing a motion before the assembly. They're pretty easy to remember, because the first step is a member makes a motion. Uh, our second step's probably the easiest to remember, because second is a second. It's just that, another member seconds the motion. Now, the third step is the chair states the question on the motion. And what we have there is the chair simply repeats what happened in the first and second steps. Uh, so the chair would say, it is moved and seconded. Uh, and so when the chair says it, it is moved and seconded, uh, it allows the assembly to know that, okay, now, a motion is being placed before the assembly, but also, uh, it's, it's good to be in the habit of saying it is moved and seconded, because when you say that, you're automatically reminded that you need to be looking out to see if there was actually a second. All right, uh, next slide, please. Now, um, here's a, uh, another little, um, uh, rule from Robert Rules of Order. No second is required for a motion that is made by direction of a committee, so long as the committee consists of more than one person. Okay, next slide. Uh, also, in small boards and in committees, no seconds are required. So now, you are a small board, however, you do have, uh, rules that supersede this provision in Robert Rules of Order, and many, uh, governmental bodies have this, even small boards. So, seconds are required, just like a large assembly in, in your assembly, but it's, uh, you know, important to be aware that in Robert Rules of Order, Robert Rules of Order is not telling you that a second is required in your body. So if somebody shows you Robert Rules of Order saying you don't, you're not required to have a second, well, that's true. However, you have a superseding rule that says that you do require seconds. Next, uh, slide, please. And that covers our specific rules. Next slide. Okay, so what happens if it's discovered that an adopted motion never received a second? So, let's say, uh, a, a motion is made, but not seconded, but then it's placed before the assembly anyway, uh, as an oversight. And then, you know, members debated, and then it's actually put to a vote, and it's adopted. What happens there when it's later discovered that it never received a second? Is it A, the motion is null and void? B, the motion must be ratified at the next meeting? C, it was never before the assembly and never adopted? Or D, the lack of a second is immaterial? So, uh, what, what answer, uh, would you give here? So I'd like for somebody to, to, oh, I was gonna say volunteer, but I see that, uh, we've, we volunteered to, uh, give you the answer by advancing the slide. So, the lack of a second is immaterial. Yes, that is correct. At this point, after the assembly already starts to consider a motion, it doesn't matter if it received a second or not. Now, that doesn't mean it's okay to overlook that, but if that was overlooked, then it's too late to go back and say, oh, well, let's not consider this. Because a second simply lets the chair know that more than one member wishes to see it considered in the meeting. So, that gives the, the chair guidance to place it before the assembly to be considered. If it's already being considered by the assembly, then it's too late to say, no, we don't want to consider it, because it's already happened. But also, especially in this case, when a motion is adopted, then the assembly actually voted, and they said that, yes, we want to adopt this. So, parliamentary law is not going to undo that and say, uh, no, you, you made a mistake in the procedure along the way, so this is null and void. No, it's gonna say, okay, you didn't do it exactly by the procedure, but it's clear what the assembly wants to do, and so that will of the assembly is upheld, and nothing further needs to be done with this motion. It is simply adopted, even though it didn't receive a second along the way. Uh, next slide, please. So we're gonna see that Robert Rules of Order says, after a debate has begun, or if there is no debate, after any member has voted, the lack of a second has become immaterial, and it is too late to make a point of order that the motion has not been seconded. So this is a good example, like we were talking about earlier, that points of order have to be timed. So, if a member makes a motion, and you don't want the motion to be, uh, considered, let's say, 'cause that makes it easier, and no one seconds it, so you're like, okay, good, this isn't gonna be considered, we'll save some time on this one. And then the chair begins to place it before the assembly anyway. What would you do? Well, you would raise that point of order. You would say, point of order, uh, Madam Chair, uh, this motion didn't receive a second, and a second's required. And that will, you know, i- it forces the chair to make a ruling on that, but also it'll remind the chair that, oh yeah, this didn't, uh, receive a second. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, Robert Rules of Order goes on to say, if a motion is considered and adopted without having been seconded, even in a case where there's no reason for the chair to overlook this requirement, the absence of a second does not affect the validity of the motion's adoption. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're gonna look at making a motion, and here's how it's done. A, a member says, I move that. And now, these are three magic words in parliamentary law, because when a member says, I move that, uh, it lets the chair know, it lets the secretary know, and it lets other knowledgeable members know, that that member's making a motion, and that the words that come next are gonna be the exact language of that motion. Now, you know, we think about motions, uh, often about being these big resolutions that require notice and are, are posted ahead of time, and they're on the agenda, and that's what we're doing. Uh, so why do we need to talk about making motions? But there are many other motions that could be, uh, made. Uh, a motion to amend, a motion to postpone, a motion to refer, a motion to recess, a motion to adjourn. There are many motions that are in order throughout the meeting. And so a member may be speaking in debate on a motion, and then suddenly say, I move that, and have another motion to apply to that, uh, motion. And so, that's, that's why, you know, i- it's very important to use that language. I move that, 'cause now we see that a motion is coming forth. Next slide, please. So, after saying I move that, the member gives the exact wording of the motion. Next slide. For example, the member would say, I move that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Now we know exactly what the motion is, and we know it's either gonna get a second, or it's gonna die for lack of a second. That's the point we're at now. Uh, next, uh, slide, please. Now, sometimes I move to is used, especially with procedural motions, such as I move to adjourn, or I move to recess for 30 minutes, uh, you know, things of that nature. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, there's our example. I moved recess for 15 minutes. Next slide, please. So, uh, when the chair, uh, when the member, excuse me, says, I move that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Next slide. Another member, uh, seconds the motion, so simply says second. Next slide, and then the chair states the motion. Now, remember, that's just repeating what happened in the first two steps. So the chair says, it is moved and seconded, that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Next slide. Now, Robert Rules of Order says, if a motion is offered in a wording that is not clear or that requires smoothing before it can be recorded in the minutes, it is the duty of the chair to see that the motion is put into a suitable form, preserving the content to the satisfaction of the mover, and this is done before the question is stated. So, when a member makes a motion, uh, the chair must place it before the assembly, except in two cases. The first case is if the motion is out of order for any reason. And the chair would state why it's out of order, would explain that, maybe it's not in order at this time, it would be later, or maybe by its very nature, it's just not in order. Uh, the other, uh, case would be if the motion is not clear in some way. Uh, a member might, might suggest two or three motions at, at one time, or two or three things to do with a pending motion at one time. And, uh, if there's any lack of clarity, the chair must make sure there's clarity before this motion is placed before the assembly. All right, next slide, please. Now, after a motion is, uh, placed before the assembly, there are three steps to considering it, and that's members debate the motion. Next, we have, uh, the chair puts the mo, the question to a vote, and then the third is the chair announces the result of the vote. Uh, so that's what finishes up with that motion. It's very important that the chair does not forget that third step to announce the result of the vote, because that's what makes it official. Uh, next slide, please. So the chair does this by saying, the question is on the adoption of the motion, and then clearly states it again, that $100 shall be donated to the ABC Foundation. Next slide. Those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say no. Next slide. The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. Now, as we, as we covered before, if you're doing your roll call vote, you know, that would be the, a different process. Next slide. The noes have it, and the motion is lost. Would be the alternative. Next slide. Now, as an alternative, it might be those in favor, raise your hand, hands down. Next slide. This is something that might apply to committees or subcommittees that don't take roll call votes. Next slide. And then the chair would say, there are three in favor and two against, the affirmative has it, and the motion is adopted. Next slide. So, the chair, in parliamentary law, should not call for abstentions, because an abstention, uh, simply means not to vote. So whether a, a member indicates that they are abstaining or not, then it's the same effect if that individual does not vote. Next slide, please. All right, how do abstentions affect the result? This is something that I think we covered earlier in detail. Next slide. The abstentions don't affect the vote at all. Uh, remember, we said that if you're disqualified for voting, you could affect the quorum, and that would have an effect. All right, uh, uh, the chair does not call for abstentions in taking a vote, since the number of members who respond to such a call is meaningless. To abstain means not to vote at all, and a member who makes no response if abstentions are called for, abstains just as much as one who responds to that effect. Next slide, please. Okay, so here's an important question for us. If a motion is made and seconded, can the chair rule the motion out of order? So, uh, would anybody like to give an answer on this one? Okay, we have a yes? Let's see the answer, please. An absolute, the chair can. That's one of the duties of the chair, to decide and determine if the motion is in order or not. Next slide, please. Now, we have a follow-up. Can the chair decide by his own preference which motions he will or won't allow? So who wants to take a crack at this one? Yes or no? Can the chair decide by his own preference which motions he will or won't allow? Who thinks it's yes? Anybody think it's no? Maybe some noes? All right, let's, let's have the answer. So the answer is no. So the chair has to follow the rules in determining whether that motion is in order or not. Next slide, please. The chair must state the question on motion immediately after it has been made and seconded, unless he is obliged to rule it out of order, or unless in his opinion, the wording is not clear. So if it, neither two of those prevail, then the chair must place it before the assembly, even if the chair doesn't like it. All right, next slide. Okay, so now let's look at a proper motion. Now, here's just an example, not anything more proper about it, but a motion, uh, that five dozen donuts shall be provided at each weekend picnic. So this motion is clear. It has a clear purpose. Uh, next slide, please. And we'll see that the motion comes first. Next slide. And then, we have debate. So what's the benefit of this in parliamentary law? Well, debate must be germane to the pending motion. So without a motion pending, then the chair has no guidance about what would be germane. People could talk about, uh, donuts, they could talk about the weekend picnic, they could talk about not having one, it costed too much money, uh, it could go anywhere in any direction. However, when you have a clear motion, five dozen donuts shall be provided at each weekend picnic, now, the chair has guidance as to what is germane debate. So members can't talk about doing something other than the weekend picnic, or we shouldn't have a weekend picnic at all. Well, that's not germane to whether or not we want to adopt a motion to have five dozen donuts provided at the weekend picnic. All right, next slide, please. So, because germane debate must be germane to the pending question, this is why we always want to have that motion first. Uh, especially if we know, uh, you know, what it is that we wanna do, we wanna make sure we put it into a form and of, uh, the proper, uh, motion that's clear. Now, when you have resolutions, uh, submitted in advance, uh, what some boards will make the mistake of doing is talking about it before it's actually pending. Because what we do is, we wanna have it pending, because then you have a parliamentary situation where debate must be confined to the merits of that motion. And also, a member speaking in debate can amend that motion, uh, can move to postpone it, uh, can, can limit debate, uh, all of these things can be done and applied when you have a motion pending. But if you're just in the middle of a meeting, talking about something, and nothing's actually pending yet, then, uh, you know, you're, you're just wasting time and energy, because you don't actually have, uh, that, the meeting, the, excuse me, the resolution that you're going to, uh, act on actually in front of you. Next slide, please. All right, so now we're gonna talk about debate. Any questions, anything we covered before we get into debate? Okay, next slide, please.
I have a, I have a quick question.
Yes.
If a member stays quiet and doesn't say nay or abstain, that's an aye, right?
No, so, so if a member does not, uh, vote, that's, you know, considered an abstention. And that abstention is not a vote at all. So it's not a yes, and it's not a no, under Robert Rules of Order and under parliamentary law. So, you would have to have a specific rule in your, uh, organization, which I didn't see in the, in what I had reviewed. Um, you would have to have a specific rule that, that says otherwise. So if there is no other specific rule, what you have under general parliamentary law and under Robert Rules of Order, is that a member has a right not to vote. And in doing so, in abstaining, that member does not affect the outcome. So as long as there's a quorum present. Uh, if you have, you know, uh, six members there, and you have a vote of, uh, four to two, uh, or let's say, uh, no, you have a vote of, uh, three to two. Well, that is, that is adopted by a majority vote? Because those two members who abstained, oh, I said there were six there, that one member who abstained, uh, doesn't affect, uh, the outcome, doesn't, uh, doesn't affect the vote. So, uh, yeah, it, just keep in mind that a vote, under general parliamentary law and Robert Rules of Order, is based on the votes cast, not the members who could have voted if they didn't abstain, but simply, not on the members present, or on the total membership. It's based on those actual votes that were cast. So, a vote of one to zero is a unanimous vote that adopts the motion. Two to one, uh, satisfies a two-thirds vote, uh, even if there are 50 members or a thousand members present in that meeting.
So, generally, P. Literally looking at everyone that is voting? And who patrols that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, I'm sharing the meeting, right? So usually, it's, I've been, it's seven of us, but I have a board that, it's like 17 of us, so it's hard to keep track.
Okay.
How, so how, how do you, you know, if someone does not say aye or nay, who patrols that? Who, who?
Right, so, um, normally, so in a meeting where you don't have any, any requirements, where you have to track how everyone voted, but you're just voting, you know, like, when you're in that situation, um, it's not, uh, it's not important to take note of who, who abstained, you know, just in that situation. Uh, you would just say, all those in favor say aye, and you would listen for the response. And then you would say, all those in favor say no. Now, if it's clear that there were more ayes than noes, it's adopted. If there weren't more ayes than noes, then it's lost. But if it's too close to tell, then you would take it again, perhaps by, uh, you know, a show of hands, so that you could be more clear on what the outcome is. But if it's clear that it was adopted, meaning that there were more in the affirmative than the negative, no matter how many voted, then you would, uh, declare that, um, that motion adopted. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Tim, I have a question.
Yes.
If, um, if, uh, one of the council member does not vote, doesn't say nay, or, or, or a, or, how does a clerk put it in the minute as abstention?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, a member, and it's kind of a strange, kind of a strange thing. Normally, when you, you know, roll call vote, um, you know, you would say abstain, just so that, you know, people are, are, are clear on it, because they're calling you on a roll. you know, people are clear on it because they're calling you on a roll. But you don't have to say that you abstain. If you simply don't vote, then what you did is abstain, you know, whether you said so or not. So, yeah, anytime a member doesn't vote, but they are there and could have voted, then you would mark that down as an abstention if you're taking note of the abstentions.
Follow-up question, so if staff notices that, are they supposed to stop the meeting if the governing body is not recognizing that?
So like, are you, what would be the scenario there? Are you saying?
Well, without getting into too many scenarios, it's just like, like I said, it's hard to kind of keep track of who votes what. When it's obvious that a motion passes or it doesn't, it's fine, but who? So if that clerk sees two of us staying quiet, two of us saying nay, and three of us saying aye, it wouldn't carry. But what if I heard the majority saying aye and I don't catch that? So are they supposed to stop the meeting?
And so that's very important right there. It's very, that's why it's very important that you announce the result so that people can, and other members can weigh that out. Now, strictly by the rules, it would be only the members who would have the ability to point out that, oh wait, you know, I don't think that that was accurate. However, from a practical standpoint, if someone is there who's in charge of tracking that down, I would say definitely, from a practical standpoint, they should, and work that out with the chair in advance, how would you like me to notify you? I don't want to interrupt the meeting or whatever, but if I see this happen, you know, can I raise my hand? Can I, you know, bring this to your attention in some way? I mean, that's just a practical situation that makes common sense, like to bring that to your attention. And then you want to, you know, make sure that you are comfortable with it. As the chair, you should always, you know, be comfortable. If you said, well, I thought it was adopted, but someone I trust says that they saw something different, let's take that vote again. You know, maybe let's take it in a different way if we have to, you know? Let's maybe, you know, take a show of hands or, you know, whatever the case may be to make sure that we get that vote accurate. Does that make sense?
I have a question.
Yes.
I'm part of another, of other committees, and what I see done traditionally or as a rule, I guess, every time we vote, either as a yea or a nay, the chair always, always asks for a roll call just to make sure that the vote is clear and it's stated in record. So I was just wondering here with us, I know most of the time our mayor or the chair is the one who requests roll call whenever we vote on a certain item. I just wanted to know if anybody else can ask for that roll call, or is just up to the chair to request a roll call?
So the specific rules that you have, now, under Robert's Rules of Order, you can't just by nature demand a roll call vote. It would have to be a vote, a majority vote, to decide to do anything other than a voice vote. And the idea is that it's going to take a little more time, so the assembly should be willing to take that time. However, you have specific rules that a roll call can be demanded by an individual member. So that's important to keep in mind, that any member could, you know, demand a roll call vote. But also, that means that it's not required to be every time. So, you know, you may, you may take a voice vote and you may decide that, okay, it's clear how everybody voted, or you might take a hand vote, you know, to, you know, see how everybody voted. But a roll call can be demanded by a single member in your particular board, by your specific, yes?
Thank you.
All right, we can go to the next slide if you're ready. Okay, so a meeting is for the transaction of business. And let's have our next slide. A meeting is not for discussing issues or talking about problems. Now, this catches a lot of people off guard because a lot of people say, well, that's what we do in our meetings. We discuss issues and we talk about problems. Now, to be clear, let's have our next slide, please. Debate is an essential part of the transaction of business. And remember, the purpose of a meeting is to transact business. So debate is essential. We can't separate that out. However, let's look at our next slide. Idle discussion is a major hindrance, if not the major hindrance, to the process, to the deliberative process. So idle discussion is very bad. However, debate is essential. So that brings up a very natural question. Let's have our next slide, please.
Before you continue, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So say that I'm a business owner, and we talked about idle discussion. Can I say that I'm speaking as a business owner and not as a council member during one of the council meetings?
So, you know, I would have to say that you could say that. However, from a parliamentary standpoint, you know, you are a member of the council. So you're still speaking as a council member, but what you would be doing there is just letting, framing your comments in a different perspective. But the reason that you're speaking there is because you are a member of that council, unless it was, you know, even if it was a section of a meeting that was dedicated to, you know, comments from non-members, still, you are a member of that council. So there's really not a parliamentary effect where you can, you know, shed your membership on the council and still be on the council and talk from a different perspective. But that is a part of who you are, also a business owner. So that's what we see a lot in debate, is people say, you know, in my other job, I do this, or I have a background in this, so this is why I'm saying these things. Does that make sense? I mean, it's valid for you to do that, but keep in mind that you are a member of that council, and that doesn't change just because of the perspective you're framing your comments All right, so.
Thank you.
Yep, certainly. So what we're talking about is what's the difference between discussion and debate? Because this idle discussion is very bad and debate is essential. So what's the difference? Let's have our next slide, please. So it gets a little confusing because debate is discussion, but debate is a very specific type of discussion. Debate is discussion on the merits of the pending motion, and that's what makes the big difference here. Next slide, please. So for discussion to be debate, it must, number one, must pertain to whether the proposal under consideration should be adopted. You can't just get historical background on it or talk about it or say, oh, this is something I really enjoy for this reason and that reason. It's whether or not it should be adopted. Also, it must pertain to a matter that is pending. So next, we have, also in debate, you cannot attack a member or question a member's motives. Next, we have, in regards to a member, your debate cannot contain words such as lie, liar, or fraud, and cannot impugn a member's character. Next slide, please. And debate alternates between those in favor and those opposed. So those are the characteristics of debate. Now, let's do a quick, fun little exercise here. Next slide, that I like to call, can you say this in debate? So I would like for, you know, you guys to just chime in as we go along here, and I'm going to give you a sentence here, and then you tell me, can you say that in debate? So a motion's been made and seconded, placed before the assembly, members are debating it, and then can you get up in debate and say, this motion is a horrible idea? Is that allowed in debate? Who thinks yes?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Who thinks no, you can't say?
No.
Nope, can't say that? All right, let's have our next slide, please. Okay, so, yes, you can. You can say, this motion is a horrible idea. And it's important to keep in mind that when you're speaking in debate, the whole purpose is that you share how you feel about this particular issue and about this particular motion. So yes, you can say this. This may not be the most productive thing to say in debate, but you are allowed to share how you feel about the particular motion. Next slide. Can you say, this idea will never work? Who thinks you can say this in debate? Any yeses? Couple of yeses, okay. Any noes?
No.
This idea will never work. Okay, all right, so let's have our next slide. So yes, you can say, this idea will never work. And what I'd like for you to think of in this regard is think of everything that you say in debate could be prefaced by the words, I think, or in my opinion. So I think this idea will never work. That's just what it is. That's your opinion. And in debate, your, what is expected of you in debate is to share your opinion on that particular issue. All right, next slide, please. How about this one? Can you say, while I have the floor, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank all of our volunteers for doing such a wonderful job at the voter registration drive last week, and I hope all of you will consider volunteering again in the drive we're doing next week. So can you say that? Who thinks yes?
Yes.
Who thinks no?
No.
Any noes? Okay, why not? Why can't you say this one? Let's have a look at our next slide. So this is a no, and let's look at the next slide. Next slide, please. There we go, right there. Must pertain to a matter that is pending. Remember, debate must pertain to that pending matter. Otherwise, people could talk about anything, and that's how we lose track of the meeting. All right, next slide.
Tim, this is Jenny. If you have an agenda item and you have a specific discussion and, you know, one of the council members starts deviating, discussing something different, who has the authority to bring that, you know, that subject back into discussion, or who has authority?
Right, great question. So what would happen here is the chair has that duty to keep an eye on the debate, to make sure that it's always germane to the pending question. Because otherwise, that's how we're going to get, you know, lose time and lose our focus. So what if the chair doesn't do that? Then what would a member do? Well, that's a situation where you could raise that point of order. You say, point of order, Mr. Chairman, debate must be germane to the pending motion, and I don't believe debate is, this debate is germane. And so then the member, the chair would make that ruling. So the chair has that first responsibility to make sure that debate is always germane, but any member has that right to point it out with a point of order. Okay, now let's look at this example. Can you say, before I talk about this motion, I'd like to say that the last motion was truly a great idea, and I'm glad we were able to adopt it? Who thinks yes? How about any, are there any noes? All right, let's have the next slide. So no, you can't say this. Next slide, please. And the reason for this is the exact same reason. Must pertain to a matter that is pending. All right, let's have our next slide. All right, can you say this in debate? Can you say, if this motion is adopted, residents will leave town, not necessarily this month or next month, but eventually, our population will decline as a direct result of this motion? Can you say this in debate? So, next slide, please. Our answer here is yes, you can say this. And keep in mind that this is your opinion. All right, next slide, please. All right.
Tim.
Yes.
Quick question. I have a council member that is in DC, which is three hours ahead of us. In which slide number of the 712 are you in?
No, so just to be clear, we're not, we're not going to be covering all 712, but are you asking what slide number still?
Or around about time of the presentation.
Oh, the time of the presentation.
Because he's three hours ahead of us.
We'll be done. I was shooting for seven o'clock, so I can wrap up here real quick. Let's just do another one of these, if that's okay, and then we can. All right, so this will be our last one. I feel that the chairman of the fundraising committee only wants to have this raffle because he wants to make a good impression before he runs for office in two months. Can you say that? Who thinks yes, you can say this? Anybody think no? All right, let's have a look at the answer. So no, you can't. And let's have another slide. So a reason for this is you cannot question a member's motive. So what I want to leave you with here is, keep in mind that when you're speaking in debate, it is the motion that is before the assembly that is being debated, not the maker of the motion, and not any member who spoke in favor or against the motion. It is simply the motion before the assembly that is being considered. And all right, since we are running out of time now, I will leave you at that. Are there any final questions before I go on anything we've covered or anything else?
Are there any questions or comments from any of the council members?
No, but thank you, and this is very eye-opening and very well appreciated. I feel like saying hi to them.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for having us.
Tim.
Yes.
Hold on a second. And are there any questions from any of the city-appointed board members or commission members present in the audience? Okay, I don't see any from anyone.
Can I ask a question? Tim, how much did we miss out of the entire presentation?
Oh, well, I should, I should say that I always have more just in case, you know, we need to go over or anything like that. But, yeah, I like to, I like to cover, you know, the seeking recognition and then the making motions debate. And then, you know, it would be nice if I had time to cover also the voting and amending motions. So those are, those are some that perhaps we did miss because of some of the computer glitches, but we did get the bulk of it, yes.
Thank you, Tim. What I want to recommend to the council is that we do another work session to cover the items that we're not covering, if that's appropriate for the council.
Yes, yes. Okay, I see council members not in.
Can we also get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I can work that out with, actually, I think, I think they have a copy now, but just let me know, and I can, I can work that out with staff.
Thank you, Tim. Anything from staff? Council members? Okay. Having said that, I'm adjourning this meeting at 7:07 PM. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Have a good evening.